Well, they probably.
Good evening. I'd like to call to open the Wednesday, September twentieth, two thousand and twenty-three, meeting of the Public Board of Education. All rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As per the agenda, can I have a motion to adjourn into a short executive session for the purpose of getting an update on a personnel matter?
Motion.
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We'll be back shortly. We are adjourning back from executive session. No other board business was discussed while we were out. Reading of the mission statement. We are committed to academic achievement and success for all students in a safe environment. and prepare our students to become responsible global citizens. Approval of the revised agenda. May I have a motion to approve the revised agenda?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Public hearing, safety plan. Before we go there, Ms. Rodriguez, would you like to say something?
I do. Good evening. I would like to publicly address a couple of key topics that have been widely shared and discussed on social media since last Friday's incident at Monroe Woodbury High School. On Friday, September fifteenth, approximately seven Monroe Woodbury High School students were involved in altercations outside of the school while dismissal was underway. Principal Elisa Soto, high school administrator, safety staff, and local law enforcement quickly managed the situation. Involved parties were swiftly identified, parents were contacted, and a thorough investigation was conducted. All individuals were seen by medical personnel as a precaution, and they were then released to their parents. All involved students are subject to serious disciplinary action in accordance with the district student code of conduct. Six students have been suspended, and out of the six, four students will attend a superintendent hearing to determine next steps. Let me be clear. This type of behavior is unacceptable in our school and in our community. I want to thank the high school administrative team, safety personnel, and local law enforcement for their role in effectively handling the situation. I also commend those students who did the right thing by trying to dissuade the students from fighting. Unfortunately, young people sometimes make poor decisions and then have to be accountable for their actions. Our hope is that these students learn from their mistakes and make better choices in the future. Seeing our students fighting outside of our school is disturbing, but it was also upsetting to see some of our students recording, cheering, and encouraging them to fight. These videos were later then shared via social media and Channel 12. I want to remind members of our school community that each and every one of us plays a role in shaping our district's culture based on a foundation of pride, trust, and integrity. We all play a role in maintaining a safe school environment. We're all accountable for our actions and words, whether we are on the sidelines of an incident or commenting on social media. Following the incident, Mrs. Soto and her administrative team visited every high school classroom, reinforcing these important messages directly to our students. We must each be an active participant in nurturing a school culture that supports the district's mission of preparing students to be responsible global citizens. As a result of this Friday's incident, it was linked to a conversation related to Monroe Woodbury hosting a football game under the lights. In June, I met with three students who respectfully requested the opportunity to play a football game under the lights during the 2023 season, their season as their final season as Crusaders. I explained to them that we would do all that we can to support their request because they deserve to play on the field at night. However, sufficient safety measures must be placed to ensure a safe environment for players, families, and spectators. The three young athletes acknowledged that unfortunately there have been some serious safety concerns at many games throughout the county and state, and understood an event of this magnitude required much planning and preparation. On September fourteenth, a planning meeting was held. Although a Friday, September twenty-second game was discussed as an evening option, it was later determined a game later in the season would be more appropriate. I believe that this information was not accurately conveyed to the student athletes. It is unfortunate that the incident on Friday happened after school. It gave the appearance that the Saturday game had been rescheduled to a Friday and then back again to Saturday as a result of this fight. This simply is not true. The game was never changed, and if a fight had never happened, this game would never have taken place. We are committed to hosting an evening game, but we must be sure that we have adequate personnel and the logistics worked out to ensure the safety of our players and spectators. We will share this information when a date has been selected. There has always been challenges. What defines us is how we respond to these challenges. We must collaboratively work to support the district's mission. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up on the agenda is public hearing, safety plan. Do we have any one public comment on the safety plan for 2023, 2024? If there are no comments, may I call for a motion to approve the safety plan?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Update on questions and comments raised from interested citizens?
Oh, we don't have any. No, there weren't any questions.
Wasn't there?
Uh-uh. It was a statement.
Okay. Okay, next up, we have questions and comments from interested citizens. First up, we have Mr. Tony Cardone, Mayor of Monroe.
Supervisor.
Supervisor, sorry.
I don't want the mayor yelling at me. Okay, thank you very much for the opportunity to speak to everyone. I'm here as president of the Monroe Woodbury Parents Football Club. I want to give you a little history lesson. That club started in the mid-seventies. It was started by Mr. Joe White. I graduated from Monroe Woodbury in seventy-nine and benefited from what his legacy began. In the mid-eighties, the club dwindled and was a little dormant. And then in nineteen eighty-eight, Mr. Tom Lemme brought the club back to the forefront. Since then, we've been blessed with leadership from Tom Lemme, Joe White, Paula Catalina, and Tom Kennedy. Over the years, the Parents Club has supported many events in the community. The Breast Cancer War, Make-A-Wish Foundation, the All Night Grad Party, individual needs, and other charities in the area. All because of football team, a coaching staff, and student athletes have had the support of our community. We've also assisted in giving out over three-quarters of a million dollars in scholarships to the Michael J. Finnegan Foundation, and will continue to offer the Tom Kennedy Scholarship through the Parents Club for those student athletes on the football field. If not for the efforts of Ray Uschling, who was also an officer at the Parents Club, there would probably be no lights. In two thousand, Ray spearheaded a drive where the community raised the money in order to erect the lights. Without Ray's drive and those that supported it, they probably would not be there. We're not concerned about this weekend. We understand the logistics of not being able to hold the game. This is about the past two years since COVID. You're faced with a challenge to light up the lights for the student athletes. I'm not just talking about football. I'm talking about lacrosse, soccer, track, and even cheerleading on that main athletic field. We need to find a solution, and the Parents Club, in the spirit of the Parents Club, is here to offer a suggestion. We would be happy to pay for private security. We've gotten a quote from Atlas Security for six guards in addition to whatever Monroe Woodbury provides for one football game this evening. It's not that I only want one football game. I'm just saying what we can afford is what we're going to do. We also will pay a portion for any other athletic team that has a game at night during the season. I also know we can secure the sheriff's office, the state police, and without a doubt, Woodbury PD will be there. Let's not allow the offenders to determine the outcome. We need to stop avoiding obstacles and challenges and quit on our students. In America and at Monroe Woodbury, the best solutions, the best fine solutions is instead of creating excuses. Avoiding night games is just that, an excuse. We don't need to deprive our students of that experience, and we need to make sure that in the future, if the opportunity arises, they should have as many night games as they can play on that football field. We know you didn't consider moving classes to the evenings after the altercation happened in the day, so there's no reason we should stop playing under the lights. I'm sorry. It's been done for twenty-plus years, and all of a sudden we have to stop because we can't find a solution. My final point, I know it was communicated to the Monroe community, and I quote, "It is in challenging moments like this that we have an opportunity to grow, learn, and reinforce our commitment to a better future." That's awesome. Now let's plan on doing it. Please find a solution for all of us. It will make this year and the future much brighter. Crusader pride exists in this room. Let's get it done, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker we have is Dory Hooly.
Good evening. Thank you for letting me speak tonight. Very glad to hear you commend those students who stepped in and interrupted those fights. That was a very important thing. I'm Dory Hool. I'm a councilwoman with the town of Monroe, but I'm also the mom of five kids, two of whom have graduated Monroe Woodbury, one who is a current sophomore in the school, two who are in fifth grade at Pine Tree. So I'm very familiar with the school district. I watched those videos, and I was very disappointed to see what I saw on those videos. I was disappointed to see the fighting. I was disappointed to see the cheering. I was disappointed to see all the phones out. And you're right in saying that that is not the best of what Monroe Woodbury has to offer. But I'll tell you something else that I did see. I saw a few high school students fighting. I saw a number of adults, staff, security try to end the fights, one of them getting knocked down to the ground. But I also saw students who went against the grain, stood up, walked out of that crowd, and over to those fighting kids, pulled them off each other, and stopped those fights. That's what we should be focusing on. That's the thing that we're going to be able to get to increase the pride and decrease the fighting here at Monroe Woodbury. My oldest son started the high school in 2014. There have been fights in this high school, at least since 2014. There have been fights in all large public high schools for decades. We know as parents and as educators that negative reinforcement does not reap the same benefits as positive reinforcement. If there is an action that we want to see repeated, we need to celebrate it and we need to reward it, maybe on a Friday night at a football game. So to those students who stepped up, went in, broke up those fights, I want to tell you personally, I am impressed and I am so proud that you wear MW on your chest. And I only hope that the rest of the adults in the room realize the same thing. Thank you.
Next up, we have Haley Thomas.
Good evening, members of the board, student athletes, and families of Monroe Woodbury. My name is Haley Thomas. I am a senior, and I am here speaking on behalf of the Monroe Woodbury Varsity Cheerleading Team. As most of us are aware, a reoccurring issue within the Monroe Woodbury School District is the confiscation of Friday night football games. Nationally, Friday night football games, more commonly referred to as Friday Night Lights, are a staple event experienced by a large majority of high schoolers. However, I can stand here and confidently say the student athletes sitting here today are not a part of that majority. Many of us have cheered since we were in elementary school in the district and attended these games in admiration of the varsity cheerleaders, looking forward to the day that we would be one of them cheering on our team. However, we feel like we've been robbed of this opportunity due to the actions of other students. We and our families would like to know why Monroe, excuse me, why Monroe Woodbury continues to deny us this experience after two tireless years of trying with our best efforts. We felt unheard and pushed to the side until recently, we felt there was a glimmer of hope that these experiences would return. This was until students who are known to not be a part of the athletic program made poor choices, which appears to have taken this opportunity off the table. After bringing home win after win for Monroe Woodbury Athletic Program, we feel that it is unfair for the cheerleading and football community, as well as the student body who supports us, to be punished for the actions of others. Our mentors have always preached to learn and grow from your mistakes, but where is the representation of this statement during the situation? We are all aware of the tragedy that took place in Newburgh last year during a Friday night game. Instead of ignoring what occurred, they took the correct precautions and procedures to make their students and their families feel safe and protected. With that being said, it's been brought upon the board that there are many ways to make a safer environment for your students, their families, and your staff. The school has granted every student with an ID card, which could go into further use by scanning them to be allowed entry to the games. We've been super privileged with the security staff as we have quite a number of people on duty at all times. We know firsthand there are a good number of Monroe Woodbury families and faculty that will be willing to volunteer their time to help out if it would mean the administration would reconsider giving our students the Friday Night Lights experience we deserve. If we had the same amount of people on duty as we do throughout the school day, we presume it would be a safer place to host a game. As for the students who take advantage when given the opportunity, there shouldn't be any thought other than a punishment, such as revoking the privilege of attending these football games. Our student athletes and family have tried to plead the case that such punishments should not extend to everyone as the action of a few students should not define a student body of three thousand. We hope you take this into consideration to give our students the high school experience we can remember and give our seniors the opportunity they deserve to make memories they will cherish before their high school years come to an end. Thank you.
Thank you. Our final speaker is Quincy Banker.
Good afternoon. My name is Quincy Banker. I'm the student council president and I'm a football player for Monroe Woodbury. First, I want to say thank you guys for hearing the issue that the cheerleading team and the football team has brought up. It means a lot to us. It means a lot to the community for you guys to hear our voice and actually want to make a change. Ever since middle school and elementary school, going to a Friday Night Light game was one of a kind. From the energy from the crowd and seeing the winning program at Monroe, meeting every single team on Friday night, the main reason why I started playing, the majority of the team started playing football. We understand that the issues that took place two years ago were not the football players' fault because we were playing, but we understand that the issues that happened is a consequence, and if one person does a thing, it happens to the rest of us. That's a motto that we live on, our team. If one person does something, the actions and repercussions happen to the whole entire team. We understand that safety is an issue, and we want that to be the first priority for our school, for our team, and for the community. We understand that, and we understand why we are here, because that is the main issue. As a team, our goal is to win. That is our thing. We want to win. Expect to win is our motto. We understand that. From bringing the community together and wanting them to realize that we want to win is the best thing. We want to understand that the kids who come up from varsity or to go to varsity, even from middle school to elementary school that want to play football, we want them to know expecting to win is our motto, not just in football, but in life, to win the day, to win in school, to win in family life, to win in home life, to win everything. Battle those obstacles every single day that you don't think you could do, but you will be able to. Expect to win is a thing that has been passed down from years to years, from different programs, from JV to varsity to even modified. I want, once again, like I said before, I want to thank you guys for hearing this issue, and we want to leave a legacy. A legacy not only to try to get Friday Night Lights back, but to leave a legacy to understand that we care for the student body, we care for the community, and we care for everybody that wants their voice to be heard. Though we understand this issue could not be fixed in one day, we hope you guys could take the time to realize that we care about the community, we care about the football team, we care about every single person that's put their time, money, and energy into this program to see us succeed and to see us excel, not only in football, but to be young men and young women to go past this world. Thank you guys so much for hearing me. My name is Quincy Banker. Thank you.
I want to thank all the speakers for coming in tonight and having your voices heard. We're going to take a five-minute break for those who want to leave during this session or stay. You're welcome to, but we're going to take... Should we do five or ten?
No, five.
Five. We just need a five-minute break, and then we'll come right back in.
And if they need something signed, they should come to us.
Okay. Okay.
I meant it.
Where's the thing?
It's in here.
Okay, welcome back. We are back from a five-minute break. No board business was discussed during the break. I'd like to start this session by talking about the high school art department displays, which are seen in the room. The displays on the left and right are highlight our high school art students, the Art Guild, and the National Art Honor Society. Are very active clubs with over 150 students, collaborating weekly to create art for our school and the surrounding community. The students are depicted here working together to create murals and window paintings, which can be seen throughout the school and community. Additionally, there are examples of artwork from the graphic design classes at the high school. On the bulletin board, we are featuring the senior art majors. There are 36 senior art majors this year. The students submitted selfies for display, and these photos depict their individual creativity as well as their unique personalities. I want to thank them for sharing that with us. The other thing I wanted to just quickly say, Mrs. Rodriguez gave a statement before. I was asked if I would want to do a statement today. However, I don't feel prepared to make a statement because the board has not yet conferred and I do not want to speak without having conferred with the board on the incidents of last week. So I just want that to be known that it's not being ignored. It's just we have not yet conferred since everything just happened. With that being said, the high school presentation of Business, Family, and Consumer Science CTE application presentation. Ms. Soto, I'm sorry, I'm going to butcher your last name.
Polkenix.
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 Rickley.
Should have made it.
And Dr. Hasler. Sorry.
And Beth Rickley.
I said it. Okay.
Thank you very much to the Board of Education. We're here this evening to present on our high school Business Department, our middle school and high school Family and Consumer Science Department programs, as well as our career and technical education applications to the New York State Education Department. So thank you very much to the board for the opportunity to be able to present. As Mr. Ciarella said, I'm joined up here by Beth Rickley, who is the department chair of our Family and Consumer Science Department, by Elisa Soto, who's the high school principal, and Jackie Polkenix, who is the Business Department Chair as well. So, welcome. We're going to start off with a quick overview of both our Business and Family and Consumer Science Departments. So first off is our Business Department and Ms. Polkenix.
Okay. Thank you very much, Dr. Hasler. So it's my pleasure to be here this evening to share with you some of the great highlights that have been taking place at the high school and our Business Department. First, I want to say thank you for voting to allow us to add an additional staff person, which has been on for the last year. And we've been doing some really exciting things and we would like to share that with you right now. So we have added a new course, which has become quite popular, our Money Management Course, which a lot of the kids are taking. We had quite a few requests. So unfortunately, we had to turn some of them down, but it's great to see that there's that great interest in wanting to, you know, have a better understanding of what it's like to, you know, properly take care of your finances as an adult. The other thing that we also did was we started our work-based learning program, and that's really exciting. That's really taking off. This is our second semester. We started in January. We are at maximum capacity with our students. They are working in a series of different businesses, as well as within the school. So thank you, Dr. Vias, for allowing us to have some help desk students right there in the high school. Some of the other businesses, just to mention, we're working with American Eagle, Wayback Burger, Quick Check, Mercedes-Benz, and a few other restaurants. We have, we offer nine different courses, two of which are offered at the college level, College Accounting, as well as Sports and Marketing through St. Thomas Aquinas. And as you're going to see a little bit later, we're going to be showing you all of those courses and how they will play a role in this CTE process. So I want to thank you again.
Next up is Ms. Rickley to speak about our Family and Consumer Science Department.
Hi, everybody. I'm Beth Rickley. And as part of the Family and Consumer Science Department, we do have 10 full-time members. We have three at the middle school. Two of them teach seventh grade for one semester. One of them teaches eighth grade. The kids take Family and Consumer Sciences for one quarter in eighth grade. They have to do that to meet the Part 100 requirements through the state. There is a link on the slideshow if you want to look at the different modules that we cover. The high school, we have 14 different courses currently running, three of which are offered for college credit through SUNY Oneonta. We have two articulation agreements, one with SUNY Cobleskill for Foods and one with SUNY Orange for Education. Our course is full into three different categories. That's how I do it in my head. Foods and Nutrition categories. We're currently running 32 courses this year in Foods and Nutrition. We are running textile courses and design courses and as well as we have our Life Skills and Education courses. For those of you who don't know, we have a preschool at the high school called Little Miracles, where we have four-year-olds from the community come in, and our students are their teachers.
So just to give you a little bit of background in terms of what initiated this process. So we are going to be submitting two applications to the State Education Department, one by the Business Department and one by the Family and Consumer Science Department. The reason why we're going to do that is prior to COVID, the state updated their graduation requirements to include something called the 4+1 pathway. And basically, what that means is in addition to the traditional ways for students to be able to graduate with a Regents diploma in terms of acquiring a certain number of credits and passing a certain number of Regents exams, the state started to create alternate ways for kids to be able to make certain selections and have the same graduation diplomas that other kids are receiving that follow that traditional pathway. I don't know if you want to talk a little bit about the 4+1 pathway?
Yes. So currently, our students must pass four required Regents exams or a department approves alternative assessments. One in English, one in Mathematics, one in Science, one in Social Studies. And then they also need to pass a comparably rigorous assessment fifth exam. In addition to that, ACEDAS, Commencement Credential, or what we call a Pass-Ready-Work test. So ACEDAS essentially is a career plan, right? It allows the student to create a plan based on their strengths, career interests, and goals. And the goals to plan, and a plan to reach those goals. They also have to complete a CTE coursework. That requires a student to work 216 hours of CT work. Of the 216 hours, the students need to at least work 54 hours in the Workplace Learning Program. And we're very fortunate to have that in the high school to give those students an opportunity.
So the benefit ultimately of this new alternative that the state has approved is that if students still acquire the 22 credits which are required to graduate, they would only have to pass the English Regents exam, one math Regents exam, one science Regents exam, and one social studies Regents exam. Plus, if they complete one of the two pathways in Business or Family and Consumer Science, that's an alternate way for them to be able to get the Regents diploma. So in order to be able to offer the CTE pathway in Business and Family and Consumer Science, we have to apply to the State Ed Department to be able to have an approved plan. This is a little bit of a shift for us because previously, the only way for students to be able to get that pathway is for them to attend a program at BOSIS. The programs at BOSIS are predominantly CTE pathway programs where they could follow those requirements, go to BOSIS, complete their program, and still complete this 4+1 pathway. This now is the introduction to us being able to offer the same type of programs within our high school without kids having to go directly to BOSIS in order to be able to create that pathway.
In addition to that, we also allow our students to have an additional exam in Social Studies with equal US history and government. We have our AP exams. We also have additional studies in Chemistry and in Physics, giving them the additional fifth exam.
And the 4+1 pathway is still the pathway that the kids would have to take in order to be able to get a traditional Regents diploma. They still have the ability, if they so choose, because they still have to get the 22 credits in order to be able to graduate, they still have the ability to be able to get the Regents with Advanced Designation or the Regents with a concentration in Math or Science. If they choose to take more math exams, more Regents exams in math, more Regents exams in science, they still have that option. However, if they follow this and decided that they only want to get a Regents diploma, they would only need to do this as a minimum in order to be able to complete that Regents diploma. So next up, we want to talk a little bit about the actual application process that the two departments have been working on in order to ultimately submit it to the State Ed Department.
Mr. Hasler, Dr. Hasler, can I just have a question?
Sure.
New York State's one of the few states left that really follows the Regents program, correct?
Yep, correct.
So what is the value of this versus college readiness? Where, I think we've talked about it in the past, where someone could actually leave high school with a two-year degree
Correct.
by taking the credits and actually applying them. Because it's my understanding, and I'm not an expert at this, so you'll have to correct me.
Sure.
But that Regents really doesn't have a lot of value outside of New York State.
Correct.
And it's not weighed differently. I have a Regents diploma many years ago. It didn't really count for anything.
Sure.
But if I could have left with a two-year college degree or at least half of a two-year college credit, then that would have been more helpful financially and also to move me through the college system faster.
Sure. I mean, one of the things that we've spoken about, even through the budget development process, was the increased interest in kids going to a BOSIS program because either they're going for, you know, you have certain programs where you might be able to get an Associate's degree, but also kids are very interested in going to BOSIS programs because they get various certifications in various trades and things like that. So because of that increased interest, combined with, the state is also reevaluating all of their graduation requirements. And there's a strong belief that this is the direction ultimately that they're going to go in, in terms of following a college-like model where when you go to college, you have to take a certain number of credits based upon the pathway that you've selected in order to be able to complete your college program, which is a departure from the traditional methodology that they've used since all of us were in school. I mean, I got a Regents diploma also, where that is a very antiquated methodology, where kids have to take a very basic, you know, dabbling in each of the different content areas. This methodology now really starts to hone in on kids being able to make selections that are based upon things that they might be interested in. This is sort of our first sort of introduction. There are actually many different categories. And actually, the two department chairs are going to speak a little bit about how, once we go through this process and get the Business and ultimately, we're applying for Foods on the Family and Consumer Science side, there are other different, you know, we could talk about Computer Science. There are Arts Pathways. There's a lot of different options that are out there that can fulfill that pathway requirement so that kids, more kids, have the ability to follow that sort of more concentrated interest within the things that they want to go through. things that they want to go through. So, that's, I think, in my opinion, I think we all agree that ultimately, that's the direction that the state is going in. Because aside from just the pathways towards graduation, they're also looking at the value of the Regents exams themselves, where there are a lot of discussions about doing away with the Regents exams and having more project-based assessments for kids to be able to demonstrate achievement rather than just sitting down and taking a high-stakes exam, which is part of the process that we ultimately have to go through to get CTE certified. So, I hope that makes sense the way that I.
It helps very much.
Great.
Thank you.
Great.
Just a follow-up. So, the CTE component with the work hours and education, would there, would that be a path towards certification in one, one of the many fields?
Yes. So, right now, the, we're, the applications that are going to go in, and I don't want to steal too much thunder, but the applications that are going to go in, we're, we're applying for the general business CTE pathway, we're applying for the foods pathway on the family and consumer science side, there's also textiles, there's also childhood education. So, we could go through and develop similar pathways in other areas. Computer science is another one.
Like mechanics or?
Yep, yep. The, part of the reason why we chose these is because we were able to go through this process based upon core, all of these courses that they're going to be speaking about are all presently offered in the high school. So, that was, you know, in terms of pathways, that was the easiest pathway for us to sort of introduce, you know, get introduced to this process, and then we can certainly build upon that moving forward. So.
So, how does this translate into college applications? Or if somebody doesn't decide to go to college and they decide to just go to, like, secondary school and to get a trade school, what does this do to either one of those applications?
So, two things. First of all, participating in these college and career readiness programs, we are equipping our students with the necessary skills and competencies to succeed in their chosen careers. That's one. Two, many of our programs, we're very fortunate to have articulation agreements with higher education. So, we're in essence becoming feeders to these schools, and our kids have the foundations to be successful in those programs.
One of the things that's required, that, what Ms. Soto was saying, in order to be able to submit your application, you have to have an articulation agreement with higher education in the particular area that you're applying for.
So, these translate into college credits?
Yes. Some of the classes that are offered within the pathway that they have to take are also offered for college credit. Correct. And another layer of that is, we've offered, for example, the comprehensive diploma for a very long time, where students have a certain number of volunteer hours and they get the comprehensive diploma. The comprehensive diploma is a Monroe Woodbury-created diploma. It's an acknowledgement based at the Monroe Woodbury level saying, you did it, great job, the volunteer hours look really, really good, you know, a lot of kids write about it in their college applications. However, in terms of outward recognition, it's only something that's offered within Monroe Woodbury. We're having conversations, last year was the first round of students that had completed the SEAL of Civic readiness. Many of the accomplishments that the students are expected to do for the SEAL of Civic readiness resemble what the accomplishments are and the requirements are for the comprehensive diploma. The benefit of the SEAL of Civic readiness is, it's an endorsement by the state education department, which officially goes on their diploma, which carries more significance than just the Monroe Woodbury comprehensive diploma. The benefit of completing a state, ultimately, these will be state-certified CTE programs. The students will be able to say on a college application, I completed, just as if they went to a program at BOSIS, I completed a state-approved CTE program in the Monroe Woodbury School District with that endorsement for their college application.
I have a question.
Yep.
You may cover it, but I looked through their slides and I don't see it, so.
Okay, go ahead.
What is the impact on staffing? Are you looking to add staff?
Right now, zero. These two, we selected these two pathways because every single course that's on the list here already exists in Monroe Woodbury, and the benefit is, well, why don't I let, I don't want to, I don't want to.
You're stealing our thought there.
I don't want to, I don't want to. I want to let them go. I want to let them go.
They're great questions. They really are great questions.
I promise you, we will get to, we will answer that question. Yes. I don't want to, I don't want to steal the thunder. Okay, so, the application process, why don't you, why don't the two of you speak a little bit about that?
Do you want me to start? Okay. Okay. So, the first, the first steps to the application were basically to look at what it all entailed, and it's very detailed, it's very intricate. This is something that I had tried to start right before COVID came in and, you know, took over the world. So, that ended up being a blessing in disguise because instead of going the CTE route, it gave me time to put together my college classes and get those rolling. So, in the end, it helped because it made this process a lot easier. So, the process with the application was to start going through what courses do we offer, what CTE programs are out there, and what can we match together? So, what we did was, we looked to see what we're offering, and since our food program is extremely large, we have a large student population that takes every food course that we offer, let's see what they have. So, we started to look through the process, we started to look through the courses, we started to look through what the state labels those courses as to see if the curriculum matched up, and we were very fortunate to be able to put together a pathway that the state would recognize as being appropriate for the foods and nutrition course. The way we did that was, we met with a bunch of people. My department met together, we met with the business department, we met with administration, guidance counselors, we spoke to speak people in other school districts who are already running programs, and it was a lot of meeting, discussing, brainstorming. State ed as well, Kelly Grab is her name, I believe, at state ed, who I have been working with for the past year, going through application details to make sure that we have everything in place. So, once you figure out you have this pathway, you create this pathway, then you put together your whole program, your teachers need to be certified in CTE, which business, fax, technology, aren't, they're all CTE-certified teachers just because of their certification being in those specific areas. And then you just go through the process of putting things together and filling out the application, keeping track of your notes, and I'm going to stop talking.
No, you're fine, you're fine. So, kind of working off with that, in addition to that, we also had to work with folks from the local community. We also had to work with individuals at a higher institution for post-secondary, and we met with them to discuss what our potential pathways were and to see if it was in line with what the industry trends are right now. So, we did that, we met with them, you know, interconnected with facts because we had a couple of classes that we had to rely on each other for, and then sat with everybody, and they came up with, you know, the response that everything that we were offering is in line, up-to-date, excuse me, with what the industry, what your post-secondary institutions are doing, so that we can continue to develop and grow in those classes. So, we did that. We also focused on how the work-based learning program would play a component or a big piece in that part of the pathway. And we looked at different things like, well, what if you have a student that is unable to actually work in the industry because they don't have a car? Or maybe they have to go home and help take care of one of their younger siblings? So, we kind of talked about, well, according to the state, the state would allow us to have students work in the building. That's kind of where we started discussing, you know, to work with the MCC Center. Students can actually work in the school store and get credit there as well. And it would also help those students who needed that extra half-credit. So, we, so we worked that in as well.
I have a question about that.
Yes.
So, you talk about community, you talk about community businesses, and then you said that you're also going to offer opportunities within the school.
Correct.
So, do we have relationships set up now with outside?
Yes.
Can you talk about that?
Yeah, sure. So, we are presently working with, I think I mentioned earlier, American Eagle, we're working, we just actually placed one of our students at Mercedes Benz. They're, they're very pleased with the work that's going on there. So, basically, what we do is, we either work with a kid who already has a position and we are, you know, going to connect with the employer, or we're going to actually place them. So, in the case of Mercedes Benz, they needed someone, we found a student, one of our students within the program that we knew was a stellar student, excellent attendance, et cetera, and we sent them on the interview. They did very well, they were pleased they hired them. So, then what we do is, we create what's called a memorandum of agreement, both with the employer, the student, and the parents, so everybody's on board, along with the school. The school administrators have to sign off on that particular assignment. We have to follow strict state guidelines, X number of hours that you're allowed to work. You cannot work in a, like, we had a student come and say, well, I work for a deli and the owner allows me to slice the meat. Unfortunately, because they're under eighteen, they're not able to operate certain machinery. So, we have, so we had that building relationship. The work-based learning coordinator, who's Chris Conway within my department, he has to meet with the employer at least twice during the semester of the program, and he has to keep documentation. The state requires that because they want it, so we.
So, a follow-up for Eric would be, is there a plan to reach out to some of the community businesses other than those that are already?
Yes.
What was amazing is actually, I don't know, we had the job fair in the high school last year, last spring, and Mr. Conway actually set up at the, at the job fair and went around to the job fair trying to sort of make those relationships. Because the benefit is, once, once that relationship is forged, you then have subsequent kids that come into the work-based learning program where you just are kind of like rolling it forward. So, we're still very much in that articulation development phase, but slowly, as we continue to build those relationships, then you can just continue to roll kids and place kids. Another great, as was mentioned earlier, the student help desk up at the high school is actually one of our work-based learning sites. So, the kids that work in the high school doing, you know, repair work and things like that, they actually get work-based learning credit that can apply to the programs.
So, it's like a college, almost like a college work-study program?
Correct.
Is that?
Yep.
No.
Now, the difference is, the students actually, I mean, a lot of these systems were previously in place, kids, because the, it doesn't have to be an internship position, it can also be a paid position that the student is in, where many of the kids had these jobs previously. They actually now, you have to graduate with twenty-two credits, they can actually acquire high school credit when they complete the work-based learning program. They acquire, each semester is half of a credit that they get towards their graduation.
So, they get, I'm sorry, they get paid for this?
Some positions are paid and some are not.
So, are these employee, employers being reimbursed by the state or financially?
No.
No.
No, this is all?
This is all paid.
Purely voluntary.
Yeah.
How many students are in the work-based learning program?
I think fifteen right now, right?
Fifteen is the maximum.
So, is there a goal to open up more, and do we have a waitlist?
Sure. Ultimately, there's, right now, it's, there's one section in the fall, one section in the spring, which is, so it's fifteen and fifteen. The reason why it's fifteen is because, as Ms. Polkynick mentioned, the, the work-based learning coordinator, aside from the fact that they have to have weekly seminar sessions, there's New York State employability standards that the kids, aside from that, there's a little bit of a classroom component that goes along with it. So, there's class sessions that that person has to do, plus, they have to go out and they have to do multiple, you know, you know, two site visits of meeting with the employer because there's an evaluation tool that goes along with it where the employee, the employer has to conduct an evaluation, that's ultimately cataloged, there's attendance requirements and things like that. So, all of those fifteen kids, you know, they're scattered in various placements, and then, you know, more sections is dependent upon, it's a staffing conversation ultimately.
Staffing, but I think else you just said it. So, it's thirty kids total though, for the year, fifteen in the fall, fifteen in the spring.
Correct.
It's not the same kids.
And you have equal opportunities for those thirty if they chose to do a work-based program to be placed somewhere?
Now, one of the, one of the challenges in the beginning, when we, as, as Ms. Polkynick said, we started it in the spring semester. So, initially, we did it period nine. And the reason why we did it period nine is because we focused on seniors because many of the seniors have early dismissal, and then they're going out into the workplace or whatever. So, we, we sort of like fit in that niche, you know? Ultimately, again, it's a staffing conversation, but it's dependent upon if it grows, is there opportunities to be able to, you know, weave that in further? For example, one of the things that the business department did was, the, the employability standards that I was speaking about, they actually wove those standards into all the business classes up at the high school. So, aside from them, you know, the, the weekly seminar that the kids had to take initially, they didn't have to take, they don't necessarily have to take that seminar. If they're taking any business class, it fulfills the requirement for the work-based learning seminar sessions.
Correct. So, that they're not.
Correct. So, they could be free period nine, they wouldn't have to take the seminar period nine, they could leave every single day and go out into the workforce and not have to take that seminar. They only have to take the seminar if they're not in any other business course.
But if they have an outside commitment after school, like a sports or some other club-related activity, they can't do anything?
No, it doesn't necessarily have to be immediately after school. It could be, it could be on weekends, it could be whatever. Yep.
As long as they satisfy the hundred-and-fifty hours, they'll receive the credit. And mostly, all kids do not have a problem with that.
So, the follow-up was, is there a waitlist? Sorry, because I don't think I got an answer for that.
Oh, sorry.
Yes.
Okay. So, I mean, again, I would think that it's popular, so is that going to be the next concern then is to hire more staff then if there's, if there's that significance of a?
That's a good point. Well, we have, wait until.
Well, that's the strategy.
We have long-term plans.
So, you're coming down with this?
Long-term plans are at the end.
Why do I know, in fact?
Well, right now, you know, I mean, right now.
How many students are currently on the waitlist?
I don't think there's too many.
It doesn't have to be exact.
There's not too many.
A handful.
Because we, I believe there's probably eighteen that we have right now. But it works out fine because, say, one student initially was interested, but then said, oh, no, I lost, I don't have my job anymore, or, you know, I can't do it due to other commitments, so they dropped, so it actually all evens out. So, there's not a huge amount of kids waiting on the waiting list.
However, however.
But enough that you could probably fill at least one other section?
Well, the more, the more, the challenge is, the more articulation agreements we get with outside companies and kids that currently, you know, there are plenty of kids that are working that we haven't forged those relationships with yet, the interest could certainly increase because we have plenty of kids that, that go to work after school.
Right.
You know, I mean, we've, there's a lot of different, you know, we've talked about legalese, we've talked about, there are a lot of different options that could potentially be out there.
And has this been advertised to the students at the school and to parents? Because I think that would.
And how?
Well, the challenge is.
The program or?
Well, we, we.
The opportunity-based.
We have to be, we have to be careful because right now, we only, we only, we only have fifteen seats to be able to fill, so.
Well, that's my concern.
As the word gets out.
Well, I mean, fifteen per semester, you know? And, and really, like, we already have the interest for the fall and the spring.
Good job.
To answer your question, we have.
Yes.
To answer your question, we have, it's actually been placed in our monthly newsletter. So, we informs our families about this program.
Right.
But the issue right now isn't staffing, it's more placement. Like, you know, there's not enough relationships to place all the kids.
Well, and, and the challenge becomes, it's sort of like, it's sort of like the economy of scale where, you know, we, as we build relations, more relationships, the number of interested kids is going to increase, you know, so you want to sort of, the question is meeting the, the demand, the supply versus the demand.
But potentially, we can put some of the students, I mean, I know you mentioned MCC, but the cafeteria has been done before or the library, or I mean, if there's opportunities.
School store, yeah, I mean, there's, there's lots of different things.
Good opportunity. But I can tell you that all the students that are officially registered, MOAs assigned, et cetera, everybody's working, everybody's working. There's nobody, you know, not without a job. We have actually probably more opportunities than right now we do have the kids because of the maximum that we can hold for each section.
So, so next up is, is sort of a more detailed discussion about what the programs actually will look like that we're applying for. So, first up is the business pathway.
Okay. So, we decided to go with the business administration and management pathway because we felt that really fell in line with the courses that we have right now. So, these are all of our courses. In speaking with our internal committee as well as our external committee, we all came to the conclusion that our keys to success, which is also our digital literacy citizenship course that we have for the kids, where we teach them email etiquette, proper communication, documents of that nature, they felt that was a key class to offer. The money management and career and college planning course had to be a core class because that is what the state requires. The state is. The state is saying you need to have a career, college, as well as the financial piece. So that's where our two classes come there.
One, one quick piece about the money management course that you had mentioned, that was in addition, one of the things that was discussed when we talked about having the additional plus-one business teacher up at the high school, there was a lot of requests for a personal finance course. Money management is the new, you know, the personal finance course that was added to the high school for, again, as you had mentioned, like, just your individual financial planning. And, and that was, that was a new course as of last year that was introduced to the course.
And that's the one that we have a large number of requests for kids to want to take. So we felt those were, should be our core classes. And then from there, students will have the opportunity to choose a total of two credits. All of the courses listed here, with the exception of business law, are half-credits. So if it was a student who was busy and wanted to get the CTE endorsement, they would be able to take the business law class, which is one credit, and then take two other classes, they'd be able to do that quite easily. Listed on there also is our college accounting course, which is offered through SUNY Orange, and our college sports and entertainment marketing class, offered through STACK. Giving us a total of three and a half units, which is required for the state.
They had to, they were required by state ed, you have to have one point five credits that are required, and then two credits worth of electives. There was a little bit of flexibility with the keys to success, but the other two courses are required by state ed in order to be able to have the program approved. And next up is the family consumer science.
So my pathway has a little bit more leeway with it, because we have a class called Teen Living, which the state curriculum is actually independent living under their name. They can choose to take that, or they can take the two classes that count as career financial management, which is the money management and the career and college planning. So if, if they do take the Teen Living, they don't have to take the two business classes. If they take the two business classes, they can then also take the Teen Living class as one of their elective choices down below. They must take foods and nutrition, it's a foods and nutrition pathway. That's the basis for all the courses that we teach. It is a three and a half credit process as well, the state requires three or more. We went with three and a half, because it works very well with what we have to offer the students. They do have other choices below, so they do need a total of three and a half. They have food preparation and nutrition, which we call foods and human relations. They have global and gourmet foods, which we call international foods here at the high school. They could do the work-based learning internship, but it is not required. They can take that as a half a credit elective, we will be strongly suggesting they do. And college culinary creations, which is the college credit through Oneyanta, and they can take entrepreneurship, which is, so you, so you want to be a millionaire. The good thing about this, the college culinary creations does give them the Oneyanta credit if they choose to take that course. If they go through this entire pathway, though, SUNY Cobal Skill has an articulation agreement with us, where they will, if they decide to go to Cobal Skill, they are automatically accepted into the foods program there, if they want to go for that. So to answer the question before that Dr. Quifman had asked, it, it does lead a pathway right into a college choice if they choose SUNY Cobal Skill and go for their culinary program.
Thanks.
Great. So you asked several questions regarding costs. There's considerable savings, there are tuition costs, so we send our children to BOSEs, and there are considerable costs there. We would save on tuition costs, we will save on transportation costs. So our plan is not to just, we want to give our students the opportunity, do they want, if they want to go to BOSEs, absolutely, the opportunity is there. But we're also giving those children who want to take those courses, but not leave campus. So, and again, no new staffing currently, there'll be quality control. Yeah, currently, we have no new staffing. But currently, you know, this would allow us to oversee our curriculum and instruction, because it is kept in-house. I believe it will develop community engagement, there's the potential to receive greater support from our native businesses and develop community partnerships. In addition, we believe this will increase our teacher pipeline. We all know that we are experiencing teacher shortage, and this will give us the opportunity to encourage our own Monroe Fair students to go on to the educational path and come back and teach for us. We are preparing our children to be college and career-ready. We would like to secure additional local, state, and federal funds. We're giving our students an in-house opportunity, again, as I mentioned earlier, not going to other outside agencies to receive an education. This will ease students' scheduling. We have students that participate in after-school activities, they're in art and drama clubs, and oftentimes, they don't want to feel stretched and have to go to BOSEs and then come back. This will allow the in-house schedule and give them the flexibility to stay in-house and then participate in all of the activities that they love. We also want to increase our articulation programs with higher education, as I mentioned earlier, and provide the theater program for these schools. And this will serve all of our students. There have been times where students have been placed and denied at CTE BOSEs. In this event, we have two pathways that will give them the opportunity to earn these credits in our building. Just recently, I learned that CTE BOSEs canceled their business program. So here's an opportunity for our students to participate in these programs.
And one of the benefits also is that certainly there's no intention to try to prevent kids from being able to go to BOSEs. In fact, we've said that we're, BOSEs is coming back after their capital referendum, talking about additional seats that they're going to be able to offer. There are certainly programs that are offered at BOSEs that we will, in all likelihood, never be able to offer currently at our own high school. So the more programs that we're able to offer internally could potentially open up additional seats for kids to go to BOSEs at programs that we may not ever be able to offer here in Monmouth Woodbury. So we can be a little bit more strategic, because we've had recent outreach in, in the last few years of parents who have said that their kids have been waitlisted at BOSEs because there's limited seating there. So by offering more things strategically in our high school could open up additional seats for kids to be able to go to, you know, more kids to go to programs at BOSEs that we current off, that we can't offer currently in our high school.
I have a question.
Sure.
And you might have said at the beginning, what age, what grades is this open to?
Right, well, here's the benefit, right now, it's open technically to anybody.
So I know you just keep making a lot of comparisons to BOSEs, which is limited to juniors and seniors.
Correct.
So as of right now?
Kids, kids can start this program starting as freshmen. A bunch of those courses are offered as freshmen, open to freshmen.
Do we let them know at the middle school level that there's opportunities that are available once you become a freshman?
Correct. And kids can, and we, we actually had a conversation about that, about now, you know, starting to, you start to talk about graduation planning, this isn't a decision that you should be making as a senior. The goal of this is to create an alternate pathway for kids to be able to start planning as they're eighth graders moving into their freshman year.
So there's something in place, because Ms. Soto said that she shares in her newsletter, so how do we reach the eighth-grade population?
Yeah, I, I think that that's, that's sort of the next phase of this. Now, one of the things that's interesting is?
Whole another waiting list.
Well, well, what's gonna, what's gonna ultimately have to happen is, this is gonna have to sort of be a, a multi-phase kind of rollout. Meaning, when we apply, the, the approval from state ultimately is a five-year approval, meaning you have to reapply every five years. Once you're granted the approval for that, we can allow kids who've completed the program to get the endorsement, it, it's not like you have to start as a freshman, similar to the seal of civic readiness, where we were able to offer the seal of civic readiness last year, we were able to go back to kids to say, you already took these courses, New York State Ed is offering this, this endorsement, we basically can give it to you because you've already done the program. So in the beginning, we're gonna have to kind of backtrack to kids who are currently seniors, who've already gone through the program and essentially completed the course. Now that we have state approval, we can offer that endorsement. Then we'll be able to sort of backtrack to simultaneously to the eighth graders and say, you can start planning now. Basically, that happens in January, when the middle school starts to go through the program of studies with the eighth graders to say to them, here's the choices that you have available to you.
So the rough, going back to like your very first slide there, that you have that the business section has nine classes, and facts has fourteen, so, I mean, simple math, I mean, I just did twenty-five in each class, are those that could pass into?
Well, remember, those are not sections, those are classes. There are multiple sections offered of some of those classes. Like money management, I don't remember how many courses are offered, but there are multiple sections of money management that are simultaneously running.
So if I'm, if I'm underestimating then, that you've got about a hundred and fifty in those nine classes, you're saying it's more than that, because there's multiple sections of those classes?
Correct.
Right, those are the numbers of courses that we offer.
Okay, got it.
There's just different, so like, for instance, my foods and nutrition class, I think we have sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, somewhere in there, sections running this year.
So if you had to roughly say how many kids you're even reaching for those programs, what would you say, like a rough number?
Do thirty-two times twenty-four, because they're all filled. So that's how many students are taking foods classes this year.
Okay.
Yeah.
One of the other things that we learned, we contacted New York State, and we asked, can we retroactive those students that have already taken the courses? And to our surprise, we're very fortunate, we can. So you can have a student that took some of these, these courses in the ninth grade, and they will count towards the CTE pathway.
But that's what you were just saying, right?
If you retroactively?
So, so in, in the end, you know, that's what I mean by sort of a, sort of a multi-phase rollout. It's gonna start with seniors who probably have completed, you know, potentially all of it. Then it might be a junior to say, you're only a half a credit short going into your senior year, you may want to rethink about where you are, because all you need is X, and you will be able to complete that. And then also going back to the freshmen to start that planning process from the beginning.
But we'll let them know with enough time for them to?
Correct, correct. The, the difference between the two is, you know, if it's a senior who's already completed, they've also probably completed all the necessary Regents exams that they would need for a traditional Regents diploma. However, for a ninth grader, they can strategically say, you know something? I only need one math Regents exam. I still may continue to take geometry after I, after I pass the algebra exam, but I may not necessarily need to sit and take the Regents exam, because I'm taking the pathway, and I can still complete that for graduation.
So, so the state gives you complete flexibility in designing your own pathway?
Correct, but they approve it. I mean, we have the flexibility to design it, we have to send it up there, and they have to give it the stamp of approval.
With guidelines, right.
There are guidelines that we need to follow.
Right.
So the risk for a ninth grader to start this pathway, and then, like, maybe in tenth or eleventh grade, say, you know what, I want to go to a traditional four-year school, what happens with their coursework, how difficult is it for them to go back on that path? Or is this pathway going to make them competitive for application to a traditional four-year school?
Sure, I, I, I think that's part of, part of the, you know, the Guidance Council's responsibility is to sort of track that. Once a student identifies that that's the pathway that they want, if they decide, you know, sophomore, junior year, that they're not going to necessarily continue that, that means that they potentially would have to revert back to the, the traditional Regents requirements, where they may have to go back and sit for some exams. They may, you still need the, you know, to use the geometry example that I was saying before, you still need a certain number of math credits, you still need four credits of social studies, you still need four credits worth of English. So I may not have sat for the US History Regents exam, but now, because of this pathway, I need two social studies Regents exams, that student may have to go back and sit for the US exam, if they decide that they're not gonna continue on with that pathway.
Right, so I, that's why I asked that, because I just worry about advertising to eighth graders and ninth graders about this?
Right.
Thinking like, oh, this is an easy path, and then when they're more mature, eleventh and twelfth graders, and they're like, wait, maybe I do want to go to school, now they can't. Or now they like have to do X short.
They have to come back a hundred percent. And, and the reality is, like, obviously, that's a challenge. Like, if you, if you, if you pass the algebra exam, you pass the course, you got that credit, and then you decide, I'm gonna continue on with geometry, but not sit for the exam, and then move forward, decide that you may want to make some additional choices, you, you may have to go back and do that. And it's obviously more of a challenge to pass that geometry exam the further you are from sitting down for that course. Yep. But again, I, I also, I want to go back to what I said earlier, the, the traditional options of additional endorsements still exist. If you want the Regents, you know, with advanced designation, which requires additional Regents exams, you can still complete the pathway and get the CTE endorsement in any of these areas, and get a Regents with advanced designation, because you can still take geometry and, you know, get above a ninety and work for mastery in math based upon that performance. Those options still all exist, which, I mean, again, like, you want to, you want to talk about endorsements for college application, that's the way to go. My, like, more is more, less is not more, more is more.
Blending academics with this.
Correct.
Dr. Hasler, if I'm understanding you correctly, student may not have to sit for the geometry Regents, but still have to sit for the course?
You still have to take the class, yeah, you still, you still need the math credits, you still need the science credits.
And a kid who's not sure which way they want to go, I would say take the Regents.
You still gotta take it, you still gotta take it, a hundred percent, a hundred percent.
They are encouraged to take the Regents exam.
Because there's no loss there, you know, you know.
Hundred percent.
Yes.
And can I just add one other thing?
Sure.
Based on, on working with quite a few different schools that have business departments, one in particular, Carmel Central School District, a lot of their kids choose to do just that, they still take the required Regents exam, and they have this additional endorsement to help them with their college.
And they can choose which way they want, when they're more mature, as you said, when they're more mature.
Correct, and it's just another accolade that they have to be able to present to all the different colleges that they apply to.
The only thing is, they can't, they can't choose the specialty. Once they commit to, let's say, business, they, it will be very difficult to judge it later on.
Right, but when you say commit, it's just, it's their elective classes. So they can still take my classes and still take art classes and still take, because they have time in their day to incorporate any electives that they want. They don't have to just take a foods and nutrition pathway, they can still go and enjoy an art class, or an early childhood class, or a business class.
So, so if I understand this correctly, does this allow the school district to also not just offer it to people who, let's say, don't want the four-year degree, they want to go to trade schools, but also to take, like Dr. Hasler said, your mid-to-high academic achievers and say, hey, you can really subspecialize in a particular field, and when you're applying to colleges, those colleges can see, hey, that kid took advanced classes in, in computer science, they were involved with community, they had the work hour, so it makes them a more, I guess, eligible candidate?
And, and remember that the scheduling opportunity exists, because the base requirement for a diploma in New York State is twenty-two credits. You have to have twenty-two credits in order to be able to graduate with a diploma. At the basic level, three and a half of those twenty-two credits are electives. The rest are math, science, social studies, art, health, and so on. But three and a half credits are electives, so the opportunity is there already just by the basic requirement to get a diploma in New York State, to choose a pathway in terms of a concentration like that. Yep.
Got a question, sir?
Is there any intention of all of this to give our children opportunities?
Is there any intention in the future, future phase, to potentially do some level of this over summer time, so I didn't, you know?
So, we, we've started to have those conversations, because in the end, you know, the, the challenge with the summer always is, right now, summer school is predominantly credit recovery. In order to be able to sit and get a half a credit, there's a certain amount of seat time that's required, and we just need to make sure that because the summer program is truncated, that there's enough seat time for them to earn credit. Right now, our summer school program is presumed that the student has already fulfilled the seat time, they just failed the class, and needs to make up the credit in order to be able to get that credit. It's a little bit different, you know, there might have to be a little bit of an extension in summer school for them to be able to take a half-a-year elective over the summer to be able to get that credit. So, so up next are, again, we had said earlier, this is kind of our initial voyage in trying to get CTE certified as a school district. We have other opportunities that are available, some of them have staffing implications, but these are things that we're looking at potentially down the line that are in the realm of possible.
Far, far down the line, okay. So for business, there are five different pathways that students can actually follow. We're only doing the one, but up here on the screen, and you should have the handout, we have accounting and finance, that's another pathway that students can actually take, where we would have to offer advanced accounting courses. So that's one option. The other is finance specifically. And what's kind of interesting about this, regardless of whether we do this in the near future or not, I am in the process of trying to get an articulation agreement with Long Island University, where students will, if they take a specific finance course that they've designed, they will actually be able to qualify to sit for the New York State real estate exam. And we think this is a really big thing, because you have some students that maybe want to go into a career right away, and this will be a good opportunity for them. Part of that finance, we would potentially add classes for math or social studies, so we would do what's called a crosswalk. And then, the other two would be business information technology. Again, that would be probably creating, most likely, an articulation agreement, right, with SUNY Orange. And then finally, marketing, we would incorporate a FACS class. I believe it's fashion design. And then also doing an articulation agreement with St. Thomas Department.
These would all, one second, these would, each of these down the line would ultimately have to be individual additional applications that would be made to stay there because they're different categories within business CTE. Sorry.
So this particular program hasn't been working in other school districts?
Yes. So I can tell you Carmel School District, Rocklandshire Central School District, I'm not sure about Arlington. I think they, Arlington has it as well, so.
When we talk about the feeder schools, the feeder schools typically have programs, do they have something like this? Can we use, this is a powerful platform, obviously, to design your own courses. And you could talk to different institutions, different mission departments and say, hey, we want more of our students to come to university. What can we design internally to make our applicants more attractive to you?
And remember, this extends, again, this is sort of our initial sort of process of getting through that. Another example separate from these two departments is in the technology department. Right now, SUNY Onyata is, is basically the only institution. I'm sorry, Oswego, right, Oswego, Oswego, SUNY Oswego is, is the, is the only school in, in the state that offers a, a, a technology certified program for our tech teachers at the middle school and the high school. We have great, you know, you talk about the pipeline of teachers. There's great, great difficulty in getting technology certified teachers within that field. The benefit of having potentially an articulation agreement with SUNY Oswego is if you have a student who goes through a CTE program in Monroe Woodbury, we have an articulation agreement with SUNY Onyata, you have a direct connection with an institution, I'm sorry, Oswego, thank you. You're, you're Onyata. I, I mean, the number of articulation agreements that we have already is unbelievable. But SUNY Oswego is, kids then already are earning credit directly at SUNY Oswego, SUNY Onyata, SUNY Orange, the various colleges stacked that we currently have agreements with. When the kids are applying to college, they already have a transcript to that school. And so it's, you know, it, it's a direct connection with the higher level institution.
When you say New York State real estate exam?
Yes.
What? New York State real estate, sales person exam?
As a real estate agent, as an actual broker, yes.
A broker's exam, wow.
Yes, it's a finance course. So I'm in the process of meeting and talking to the dean of business, Mr. Adams. And I'm working with him and how I actually spearheaded from this was through FBLA, I meet a lot of schools throughout New York and Jericho High School in Long Island, pretty big school. They actually had a program. So I got in contact with my folks and said, hey, can you tell me more about this? What do you do? And, and Mark, I think was his first name, said to me, oh yeah, this is great. We offer this course, the kids can actually, once they get all the finance requirements done, they're, they actually have enough of a curriculum to be able to sit and get their real estate license. So.
I do have one quick question. As someone who is applying to college, it's a lot of looking at the transcript, what courses are you taking at this point? And for someone who is interested and always like wanted to get into a specific field, does this go onto our transcripts? Would it be mentioned anywhere so schools can know, hey, I did all this for a certain reason? Or is it just presumed in our applications that we write about it?
So I can speak to that. So it is listed on your transcript, but we also provide colleges a school profile. And it lists all the courses and what colleges they're affiliated with. So all of our faculty members who we have an articulation agreement with are vetted through the college. And we do follow their curriculum and instructions. So our students are actually getting college work study in their classes. So they are prepared. They are prepared when they go to college.
And we do have the ability, I believe, to be able to put them on, similar to like the seal of bili literacy, the seal of civic readiness, that, that endorsement can be.
I was just making sure it was on there so that you wouldn't have to write about it and it'd be like.
100%. But, and again, the, the benefit is, similar to the seal of civic readiness and the seal of bili literacy, by giving kids the ability to be able to potentially complete this at an early phase, the college application process is in the fall of your senior year, to try to get that endorsement before the time that you graduate, so that way it's on your transcript in time to be able to get it to that college for it to appear there is a key component of that.
Get it started earlier for us so that it's much easier than.
But it's also, it's also establishing those relationships with institutions, I think that puts the school on the map.
Yep. Future applications for FACS.
So there's two other applications that we can work with, with everything that we offer. The first is early childhood education. The new course request would be child psychology, which I would like to start to run anyway to see if we can fit that into our curriculum with the current staffing that we have. We already have a post-secondary articulation agreement with SUNY Orange, so that box is already checked off for this. I already have a pathway completed as well for this. The other one is textiles and design. The good thing with textiles and design is it would incorporate a class from the technology department, probably the architecture class. This would incorporate our fashion classes and our interior decorating and college interior design class. We do have two post-secondary articulation agree, post-secondary credit availability. So college interior design and college fashion studio are also both through Onyata. And like Dr. Hasler was saying, it's a feeder program. Onyata is the only undergrad program in the state for family consumer science teachers. There are postgraduate availabilities for master's degrees at Queens College and at SUNY Oswego. So for teachers or people who want to go back to school for that, that's their opportunity. Right now, Onyata, I believe, has 12 or 13 graduating seniors this year with their FACS certification.
And again, the, the beauty of that is, yes, it could be in interest of students that are going into the field of foods and nutrition, but it could also be for kids that are interested in going into the family and consumer science field of education within foods or within business.
Sounds like we should recruit them for teaching for this.
Absolutely.
That's the intention.
Questions?
No, no questions, this is a statement. I love this.
Great.
Thank you.
Very much.
Awesome.
Not just the presentation, but the whole initiative, I think is incredible and is a huge addition.
I mean, I will tell you, the, the team is, you know, I, I just, they're like, what do you think about this? I'm like, I think that sounds great. And they, they are the ones that pick up the ball and they are running with it big time. So kudos to them.
We thank you for listening to us and again, I want to publicly acknowledge these two ladies here who have put so much energy, thought into creating these programs for our students and thank you.
It's great for kids. I mean, it's as simple as that, it's great for kids.
We do have applications here for you to review and sign so we can move forward.
Ultimately, the applications are due October 1st. We need signatures of the board of education president and superintendent, so we'll, we'll get that at the end. So that's just a reminder that we.
No formal board approval either.
No, no formal board approval is required. Just your permission to be able to submit the application.
He'll sign.
Yes, thank you.
If you want to look at the detailed application, I have two copies that I can leave and I think we do as well, right? So we can leave these here for anybody to review them.
Can you just share digital versions?
I can, I can. I can send you the PDF.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. And it makes me happy. Thanks for that.
Thank you for a thorough, and it looks like a lot of work went into that thorough presentation. We appreciate that.
You're very well prepared with the questions and responses.
Okay. I apologize, but we approved the school safety plan. And I wrote my notes a couple of days ago and remembered I had just a couple of questions. Not, that wouldn't affect the approval of the plan, but there are a couple of questions. So page one, annually, the board will appoint the district-wide school safety team. I'm not aware that that's been presented to the board and it is something that's listed in there. So these are the types of things that as we come across them, I'm going to ask the district clerk to keep a track record of when these things have to be done. Because it does say annually, it has to be done. Even if I think the team stays the same, we have to reappoint. And the annual review and report on page three, reviewed and updated by September 1st. However, there are comments that if there are changes, there's a 30-day public, you know.
Reopens the window of 30 days, yep.
So because September 1st is so close to school starting, my question is, shouldn't this plan be presented earlier, like the beginning of August, in case that 30-day period gets triggered? So that it is ready to go, it could even be earlier than that, it could move to July, but that it's ready to go by the start of the school year. So that, that's just something I wanted to bring up based on, you know, I actually mapped it all out as I was reading it.
It, it, it's true, and you had mentioned that, Michael, at the, I think, the presentation that we made regarding the district-wide plan, the, the team, the committee, district-wide committee, I think we haven't done that in the last few years largely because of COVID. And it was one of those things that I have that as an action item to reconstitute that, present this plan to that, that team, that committee. You know, and in the future, we would have an appointment probably at the reorg meeting where appoints the district-wide safety team and they would work on that during the summer.
So we'll need to appoint one for this year though, right?
We will, yes.
So when will we have that list of participants?
We could do that, I would say, in the next four weeks, something like that.
October.
October, yeah.
Okay.
The second meeting in October.
Just to check it off and make sure it's done.
Yep, we'll do.
Okay, sorry to go backwards. I just remembered I had notes and didn't pull them out. Next up, approval of the minutes. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Action items, personnel. Oh, wait, it's, it's on the top of the page. Resolution to approve participation of Monroe Woodbury students on Menasync clay skeet team.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now we're up to personnel.
I respectfully request approval for the items listed under personnel, but I'd also like to recognize a few people who are in our audience this evening. First, Julie, still here?
She is, she's right over there.
Julia Raskowski is coming home, Monroe Woodbury community member who will be, who is being recommended. She is being recommended for a high school teaching position in special education living in, so welcome Julie. Also, we have Dr. Michael Cogliano. Dr. Cogliano is being recommended for the position of interim director of secondary special education. He comes to us with decades of experience and we're very fortunate to have him. Also, we have, where is Sabrina? Sabrina Trumbat is, has been recommended for a webmaster position for our district. And thank you for all the work you've, you've already done here and welcome aboard officially after the vote.
Are there any questions on personnel? May I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
You're official. Business and financial?
Thank you, Michael. I respectfully request approval of the items listed under the business financial, 11.1 through 12.1, I'm sorry, through 12.9.
Are there any questions? Motion? Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Committees on special education. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Hall of Fame discussion, I was caught on the way out that they needed to leave Mr. Cordone. So he wasn't sure how much later the meeting would go. So we can talk about this now. We're looking, it was talked about to set up a possible task force internally with a couple of board members, but it would really be more faculty and community members as well. The recommendation, should I, I'll put it out there, was to see if Dr. Hasler would like to head it.
I might have made that one.
He would love to.
It's good to know you have it designated.
It, it, what, what this is for is something that was discussed. It's to create a hall of fame, to also honor the students and others who have come through the district. Really set up a recognition, whether it's in the high school with murals and pictures and really amp up the pride in the school district. So, and how that would kind of come to fruition and be developed is really the task force work. Okey-dokey.
And the conversation was that it wouldn't strictly be for athletics. It would be for.
Hall of Fame.
The arts, right. It would be for across the district and recognized in various.
No problem. I love it.
Student and teachers. Or maybe focus on just, so make sure it's talked about, students, teachers, or just students?
It's really, it's what, what the task force gets to decide how they want to recognize. But we do have, you know, Andy Grammer and, you know, other people of sports related. So we want to make sure we encapsulate an umbrella. And if we have a teacher who wins the voice, then they should be part of the hall of fame.
I mean, certainly.
Student that wins the voice.
I, I can, there's, there are models out there that already exist that we can certainly reach out to some other school districts to see what they've done and we'll put something together and I'll pull a group together. No problem.
And Mr. Cordone had talked to me a while ago privately and suggested that there are other schools where you walk in and you see all of the people that have participated or just, you know, made, you know, those events in their life. So he thought that, you know, it would be a good way to honor the students and then bring notoriety to the school and people walking through the building would have a sense of pride.
You got it.
Good job, Eric.
So we'll have an update at the next meeting.
Thanks, everybody.
I guess he's the chair. You're the chair. Get it done, Eric.
You, yep.
It's probably a hall of fame CTE.
Yeah.
And thank you. Make sure you heard that too.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
We have a report by student board of education representative, Michael Martins.
All right. Good evening, everyone. First and foremost, I'd like to extend my heartfelt, heartfelt congratulations to the entire Monroe Woodbury faculty, staff, and students for successful navigating in the first month of our 2023-2024 school year. Special thanks to the faculty for prioritizing safety and ensuring a smooth start to the academic year. As a proud member of the class of 2024 and as somehow a senior, there's so much to anticipate for this year. We already witnessed a few significant changes in the initial month, which that's what I'm here for, to discuss with you all and a few other things that have been happening for the first month. So first, we had our first fire drill today. It's a little bit different than we've had in the past with usually, we all just hear the fire alarm bell, we all go out the doors, that is it. Teachers were not expected to take attendance and that is not on their part. But now teachers and faculty have been given training to understand this is the procedure to go with, this is what is needed, this is how we're going to ensure the safety of the students. And I believe this is a very good plan going forward as it was pretty successful today. I didn't see people going in the soccer fields walking up to their cars. So that's a great first start. I'd love to see it. And then secondly, attendance, we have new IDs, which everyone's, I, I think at first it was really confusing for some students where they're like, oh, this is really annoying, but I've heard actually really positive, they're just like swiping going, it's the best thing in the world. I'm like, I know, I can't believe it. We're actually trying to make attendance like a big priority this year. And I think it's something that I've seen, hallways are really clear right now. I'm not walking into like mass crowds five minutes after the bell. People are supposed to be on time and we're sending an example for these students to show, this is how the real world works. You have to be on time for things, you need to be in class. So really, those are the two big things, but there's going to be a lot more. On a little brighter note, we had our first assembly. It was really fun. We did, went through each house, so I was house A. So we had a really nice motivational speaker. He came in. He really spoke about that we're all in different points in our lives, like everyone is not perfect. We all could look around and be so impressed with how everyone else is doing and judge ourselves for it, but understand and have that motivation that we are ourselves and there's, there's no one like us and we're going to get through these hard times. We're going to be the person that we want to be and don't let anybody else change that. And as a student board rep, I also wanted to make it as my task to go around and talk to the students because I am supposed to be their voice and really get to know them all. And at first, it was a little challenging where they were like, eh, there's nothing. But as the days have gone on, we kind of finally started some, started some talks, which I think has been really, I'm very impressed with how the students think because you would expect high schoolers to be like, I don't care about this all. That is not the case. They really do care about what's going on here. And the first, the biggest thing I heard, biggest idea was communication, and I love communication. They feel a lot of the times, we are given announcements, we have had announcements that these are our actions and these are the consequences as last week's fight. that, these are our actions and these are the consequences as last week's fight. Very disappointing, and we totally understand that there are consequences for our actions, but in return, we had no feedback or any explanation on what is going to be changed moving forward, what can the students do better? It was just given as, this is the consequence, this is what has happened, please don't let this happen again. Let's make an example for these students that, if there's going to be a setback, let's have at least feedback given back to us, so that we can understand. So whether we say, in the next few months, we are able to develop a plan for either like a yearly meeting where students are able to come, talk to administration and say, these are the, the problems we're seeing, is there any way we can fix this? Whether with me and a few other administrators, it'd be amazing, I'd be more than willing to help us on that. And on a more personal note, I've also been starting to work with the high school administration, kind of meeting with Ms. Soto and all the house principals, kind of starting to really get myself known out there, so that students and faculty and staff know who I am and are able to accomplish a few projects. I've already started my project, gonna leave it a little secret, because I'm looking to really see if I can get it anywhere, and I'm really excited, don't worry. But I'm also working on a more funner, I'll tell this one, we're looking at creating a time capsule for the class of 2024, so I've already made posters, Google forms, it's going to probably be rolled out in the next few weeks, I'm pretty excited about that, and yeah, we're gonna have a really good 2024, 2023 school year, so, thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Good job.
Excellent. Thank you. Report by Board of Education committees, visitation?
We finally were able to approve a schedule for all the buildings, and the first one we'll have will be the high school on the twenty-sixth, and we'll report at the next meeting.
Great. Any questions? Policy, Suzanne, would you like me to speak on?
Yes, please.
Sure. Suzanne had reached out to me, she's having some challenges getting the team together to actually hold a policy committee. So, we need to get a commitment, because they can't hold the committee without at least three individuals. So, if, and we can talk about it separately, if you can't participate because of scheduling, if you can just let me know, and I can work with Suzanne, to move someone out and onto policy, because I think they've had to cancel a couple of meetings now?
Yes, we haven't met since the beginning of June.
Okay.
And that's becoming an issue.
So, we, we do need to get that work moving, so Suzanne did reach out to me to just talk about it today. I don't know if anyone has any questions, but you can reach out to me separately, you know who's on the committee, and if there's a challenge or a problem in your schedules to do that, let Suzanne and I know, why don't we just stay in the loop together?
Absolutely.
That way, the communication's together, and then we can see if someone else can fill in the role, if that's going to be problematic.
Is it possible that you would potentially have like a sub for it, rather than have to have a permanent person, or could it be that there's always a minimum of three people there? Just pull up.
I, I would, a sub would be okay, except if they have to sub in, they don't know the work that's been done beforehand, because you can't have five in the room, and right now, there's four.
Well, there's minutes now.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
So, I, I, Taryn, if you can check to see if we can actually do that?
Do you have an alternate? Yes.
I like that idea.
So, then just send me an email to, with me and Suzanne, if you want to serve on the committee as the alternate, and then we'll, you know, Suzanne can at least then try to schedule the meeting, and if the alternate can make it, then at least the meeting can occur. Does that work?
That sounds very reasonable.
When are the meeting times?
Well, the, the last one we tried was for twelve, was it twelve o'clock?
Twelve o'clock.
Twelve o'clock.
Okay, and then audit, I did receive proposed audit dates, and they look fine, so they'll, those will all be scheduled with the switch over in the staff, I think just we fell behind a little bit, but those are now moving forward, and those dates can be posted, unless there's any concerns. Did I miss any committee or task force that wants to give an update? Okay. Reports by board and central office, Ms. Tarver?
I just want to welcome everyone to this school year and say thank you to all the teachers and staff and pilgrims and grounds and custodians that worked that first week when we were thrown that epic storm, in typical Monroe fashion, first week, something happened, but I have countless stories about how everybody stepped up to make sure that all of us students were taken care of, and all of our families were assured that everything was well. I'd also like to acknowledge all the speakers tonight, the, the athletes, the families, the community members that spoke to us regarding their feelings with the football games, and I think that Superintendent Rodriguez's statement kind of encompassed everything that we want to share with the community, and that there was a commitment to explore having, having the games again. So, thank you, and to Dr. Hassler and everybody, that is a phenomenal program, it's amazing to be able to offer our students more opportunities, so I appreciate your work. Thank you.
And welcome to the new staff.
I can't pronounce that. I just wanted to thank the staff, of course, the new year is here, it's exciting. I'd like to thank everyone who was involved in today's presentation, it's great to see that we're working, this is actually a big passion of mine, to make sure that kids have an opportunity to continue with whatever they choose to continue with, and we're a school district, certainly, we have to provide them with those opportunities. And it was great to see the community unite behind a common cause today, which also speaks to the unity in the community, as we saw today with the football team, and, everyone should, everybody have a great night.
Don, just about covered everything. Thank you. I wasn't here for that storm, so I missed it, but I came home and I heard all the reports of all the wonderful things that were going on, to make sure our students got home safe, and it really, really is appreciated. I've been going to several of the open houses, and look forward to going to another one tomorrow night at Central Valley. I also would like to thank you for your presentation, I think this program is going to be wonderful, really, it's, it's just what our kids need. And have a wonderful school year, and have a good night.
Welcome new teammates, all of them. I would like to also thank the bus drivers who were honking the horns to call attention to those who weren't doing the right thing when it came to the fights, it really takes, you know, everybody to stop the wrongs, so I very much appreciate them being really our first action officers in all of that. And then Ms. Soto and her team, and the security team, of all really collaborating quickly and effectively. I'm glad to hear that our one security person is doing well, so that's, you know, a relief for all of us, I think. So I very much appreciate, appreciate Ms. Rodriguez's words, setting some things straight. Remember, we're all in this together, we all have the same goal. I look very much forward to attending Friday night football games, right? I, I work at West Point, so I work on game days for Saturday, so I'd love to be able to go to a game, so it's important to me, too. So I appreciate all the kids in, you know, coming up and staying their peace of mind, and making sure that all of us who are the decision makers are, continue to go the right way to make what's happened for them and their experience as they go through their four years here at Monroe Woodbury. Have a great night, getting to the air conditioning.
Very warm.
I, I too want to say thank you to the students that got up and spoke tonight, and for, for those that know, I, I did get several phone calls, texts, emails, as many of us did, but the football program is definitely near and dear to my heart as a parent, as my son has played in the Pop Warner program since he was in first grade, went all through high school playing for Monroe Woodbury, and played Friday Night Lights. So, I can certainly understand the passion of what's coming from these players, and I, I agree with Jeff, that I hope that we can come together collectively to try to figure out a way that we can make that happen again, safely. I think that's the biggest concern, and I know, you know, it's hard when you wear multiple hats in the community, because as a parent, I want it more than anything for these students, but the board member side of me knows that we have to do things safely, and I think that that's the message that hopefully our students receive tonight, based on Mrs. Rodriguez's statement, and the fact that hopefully we can all come together to figure out a plan and put that in action. I want to thank the presenters tonight, thank you, Dr. Hassler, and the team that got up to speak about that, it was great. I want to thank, I know we technically don't have the facilities committee anymore, but when you said about visitation, I do know that this signage, which, I don't know, it's not, I don't see, oh, here it is. I know that our signs are officially in place around the complex, that was a, a project that was with the facilities committee for quite some time, so I want to thank everybody who managed to get that in place for the start of the season, and thank you for the, having us attend the open houses, I think that's another way for us as board members to get our message out there. You know, we typically don't say too much, but this year, we are going to kind of highlight a couple of things, so hopefully the parents can, you know, get those messages. And I would like to also thank one of our faculty, Mrs. Pupolo, who has been an asset in helping, she is the club advisor for the Interact Club, and she was able to secure probably about twenty students that will help volunteer in the community this coming Sunday for the Village of Monroe Cheese Festival, which was rescheduled for rain, hoping it doesn't rain again, but it's on rain or shine. But I want to thank Dr. Hassler and her for helping us to get students for that, so that'll be great.
You got it.
And have a great night.
Perfect. So, I just want to say thank you, everyone, for coming out tonight, I really appreciate. Welcome to all the new faculty and staff, promise Monroe is amazing, and I guess, I really said a lot in my speech, but we're gonna have a good school year, and, yeah, thank you.
Have a good night.
I attended a couple of Sapphire open houses, UPKNK and, and first graders, Ms. Caldwell and her team of teachers did a fantastic job, the building looked super shiny, so thank you, Andre and your team, and it was nice to see the welcoming the new parents and then returning parents for the first grade. I want to give a big shout out to Dr. Hassler and high school team, this work-study program is really helping, this is over thirty years for a high school help desk, and we have seen kids grow, this is the first year for us, we have a sophomore, and we're looking at the incoming freshman next year. We started with three students, we have thirteen students, so we do have some students in waiting for more section down the road, and it, it's an interesting phenomenon that now these students who are with us second year, they are providing a feedback to us how to improvise our processes that are in place. So it's a pretty interesting conversation now, and, and it's making us better as well, so it's not just, students are getting experience, they are making us better as well. Thank you.
I'm just so incredibly proud of our, of our students, from our cheerleaders to our football players to Michael, you, you just make us very proud, you, you speak very well, and everything you say is positive, and it's very much appreciated. And I know that we've been talking a lot about an incident that happened at the high school, and I think Dory Hul said it best, we, we have to look for the positives, and there are a lot of people like yourself who continue to do positive things and be great leaders, so thank you for that. I also want to congratulate Dr. Hassler on his appointment to chairing the Hall of Fame.
I remember the conversation about that, and I feel like...
I, I, I. I think that sounds like Lori Hock has volunteered for the test. I think that if, there should be, there should be co-chairs, right? Ah, no, no, I don't think I heard a vote, I don't think I heard a vote on that. I, I, I hope, are you finished? Oh, okay. I, I, I hope that, that, that our students that attended stayed on to, you know, if they go back and they want to replay the meeting, that they stay on to watch the presentation that happened tonight, because I, I hope that the messages that they see that we will work very hard to support them. I mean, Ms. Hock and I were talking about how, you know, certainly, as Ms. Rodriguez said, that there's a lot of planning that's going to go into it, but we're going to roll up our sleeves, and we're going to do our best to try to, you know, support our students, so, you know, and just a quick thank you to the high school team, truly, I stand by what I said earlier about how, you know, they, they come to me with proposals, and I try to support the work that they do, but the, the, the real work happens at the building level, and the high school, you know, Ms. Soto and the high school team, thank you so much for your work behind that. Welcome back, everybody, I agree with what Michael said, it was, it's been an awesome start to the school year, it's been great having the board of members at the open house, I've been to a few and look forward to more, so please, parents, you know, if, if you're watching this, please make sure you come to the open house, because the staff have a lot of great things to showcase, so, thanks.
All right, thank you very much, Eric and Elisa, Jackie and Beth, I, I think what I loved the most about your presentation was what you said at the end, that it's good for kids, and at the end of the day, that's what we're about. Michael, I love your energy, oh man, it is, it's infectious, so thank you for your honest assessment of the first few weeks. I think it's important to also point out that every building has been off to a really good start, and if you ask any of the building admins, I talked to a number of them last night, it's been a really great opening. Yes, we've had some weather, yes, we've had some other issues, but it's been wonderful. One story that, that really jumps out at me with the, as far as the weather incident from, from last week, was there were a lot of heroes that day, and we had one administrator who hopped on a bus because a bus couldn't get all the way to a child's house to drop a child off, an elementary student. So the administrator hopped on the bus with the driver, they got as far as they could go, and then he jumped off the bus and walked the student right to the doorstep of, of their house, and then got back on the bus and got back to school. And it was just, it was an example of many different things that happened that day in, in every single building, and it was wonderful to hear about, and it just kind of represents a lot. One thing I just want to do say is, and you'll all get your invites in the next few days, on October third and October fourth, last year, the PTA council president had asked us to look into creating an opportunity where all of our K-five students could experience something similar. So, you know, we have different, different buildings and different cultures, so different experiences may come across differently, whether it's field days or, or, or other events, and the request was, could we look into something where we can bring every, every student together? And we have, on October third and fourth, we're bringing in a professional theater troupe to, from a company called Theater Works, to present the, a show called Dot, 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 which is based on three books by an author named Peter H. Reynolds, and the themes are basically, it's a sixty-minute show, and it will reiterate the importance of perseverance and confidence and creativity and friendship, and all of our K-five students will have a chance to attend it at the high school, and it's, but I'll make sure all of you get invited to that, so thank you to everybody who's involved with that, in making that happen, and that's all I got. Have a good night.
So I'll just echo what others have said tonight, and I'd also just like to acknowledge and thank Origin Rockland Utilities for a donation on the agenda this evening to the middle school STEM educational program, and with that, I hope everyone has a nice evening.
Yeah, I'll echo what everyone said, too, I mean, welcome to the new staff, you're joining a great district here, as you can probably tell, already, thanks everyone this week who helped, you know, keep the peace during some of those incidents, and I echo some of the words that we're gonna, you know, look to celebrate the people that actually stepped in and did positive things, because it's not all about negativity, and thanks to the football team, cheerleaders, community leaders that came out, we definitely hear you, and we're all aligned, we all want the same thing here, to have a Friday night game, if possible, when it's safe and properly done, but thank you for, for doing that. Great CTE presentation, Dr. Hassler and, and team, that really just shows the great opportunities that this just, this district affords our kids. Tomorrow, I'm going to the Central Valley Open House with Suzanne, and we'll also start, or continue discussions about certain things, including the capital project that we, we want to have the community get behind, and I also want to offer my congratulations to Dr. Hassler, we needed a Hall of Fame level administrator.
Wow, that's impressive, boy.
Thank you for your service.
Nice.
And we're back in the operating room.
You can be the first, you can't unduck yourself.
Oh.
The Eric Castle Hall of Fame.
You took yourself in.
I'm just very thankful to be around such articulate colleagues, because I can say ditto to everything, and good night.
All right, so, first, thank you for tonight's speakers and the Office of Partnership, that's huge, I think that's what the community needs, not for us to make decisions, not for them to make decisions, for us to make a decision together and actually accomplish stuff. So, huge shout out to the speakers, the athletes that came and spoke, I told Quincy afterwards, the speaker from the football team, he gave you a motivational speaker, I, I appreciated what he was saying, I, you know, I was kind of, he's a great kid, right?
He's a great kid.
Some kids you can just tell.
Yes.
So he's one of them, so, he's, he's on my good side. And also, open houses, I went to the Pine Tree one, I'll be at the Pine Tree one tomorrow, as well as the middle school ones. as well as the middle school ones. If you have any questions for me, if you see me, please come up, ask questions, I'm, don't be shy. Also, just a note, I've been attached to Monroe Woodbury for over 30 years now and we are not our worst days, we're not. They have been, but that's not us, that's not a good representation of us. So stick with us through those rough days and I promise it'll be much better once, that's all I can say, thank you.
I want to welcome our new staff. We're trying to look at all of you, yes, thank you for joining us, I know you have other choices and choosing us is important for us, so thank you, thank you. I want to acknowledge our football players and our cheerleaders and our parents who came out. This was a good example of when you are unhappy with something, this is what you do, you come and you talk and you work things out. And I just want to say that that's what we should continue to do. If you're unhappy with something, call us, come to a board meeting, talk to us, because collectively, we are a lot more stronger. So I want to, again, thank those young people who got up and spoke. I also want to remind, just thank everybody for last Friday, it, it is like clockwork, you know, the beginning of school and something horrendous happens, but again, that was a sign of, of unity, spirit, and getting through this. Thank you to the presenters, you guys did an awesome job, it is something that's near and dear to my heart, is making sure that we give kids options for graduation and so this is a wonderful, wonderful venture that you have. Thank you to the, to, to the ladies who presented, you, I know this was a lot of work, but it's, it's going to pay off in the end. And lastly, Michael, you talked about, something that you just said was, you would like the administration to hear you. So something that we are going to reignite, and I've already discussed this, is something called student engagement. Part of our report was that we were supposed to be meeting with students and meeting with them and with our cabinet, so it would be a group of students that would meet with our cabinet and you would tell us how we were doing and what we could do better, not just you, but the collective you, a group of students. So we are going to reignite that student engagement because the reason that we're here is for you, right? It's for the students and so we need to get your feedback on how we're doing and how we can do better.
I love that.
So thank you. And thank you for being a part of our board. Have a good night, yes.
Thank you. I want to thank all of the district staff and recognize and thank our students who do the right things and support each other. I also want to thank all the speakers tonight. At the start of every Board of Education meeting, I begin by reading the district's mission statement. Our mission set, statement says that we are a district committed to academic achievement and success for all students in a safe environment. It also goes on to state that in partnership with families and our community, our mission is to promote confidence, inspire a passion for learning, and prepare students to be responsible global citizens. This mission describes who we are and why we are here and why we do what we do. It is important to note that we all mirror our children and our children look to us for their own learning, growth, and development. As parents, it is our role to be a positive role model for them by demonstrating restraint, grace, and kindness in the face of challenges or opportunities. With a school of 2,800 children, our high school administrative team has to juggle, juggle, balance, and reset frequently to ensure a safe and productive learning environment for all children. Mrs. Soto and her team need to be provided with both the feedback and the grace to take that feedback and make appropriate changes. We all play a key role in nurturing a culture of kindness and respect and I want to wish you a good evening. Thank you.
Motion.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Into executive session. Second, call a favor.